There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the December 14th, 2023 zoning board of adjustment regular meeting. My name is Matt Perry. I'm chair of the board. I will now be calling this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Board member Callahan.
Present.
Grant Skors.
Present.
Hutchins.
Present.
Ingram. Johansson is absent. Chair Perry.
Here.
Vice Chair Softly.
Aye.
Smikarova is absent. Wang is absent. We have six members present.
So we do have quorum and we'll proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access in the city's legislative information management system. Available LIMS, l-i-m-s dot minneapolis-mn.gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against indicate by saying nay. That motion passes and the agenda is approved. I believe all of the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the November 9th, 2023 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against indicate by saying nay. Any abstentions? If you were not here at the last meeting, you should abstain.
Abstain, Hutchins.
So we have one abstention and that motion passes. The minutes from the zoning board of adjustment, November 9th, 2023, meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, do we have any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, two communications this evening. I'm not sure if I'd updated you fully on the appeal for 5413 Woodlawn Boulevard. That appeal was granted by the Business Inspections Housing and Zoning Committee back on November 28th. And we have had another appeal as well, 1501 Johnson Street Northeast, which was denied by the Board of Adjustment in early November, the certificate of nonconforming use related to the automobile storage. That will be heard at the first available hearing once council has said it's appropriate committees.
Thank you. And the question of the first one that was appealed and granted, can you just refresh my memory on what the circumstances were?
Certainly, Chair Perry. This was the one where they had expanded, they basically tore down the home and were rebuilding it and hadn't received permits prior or other approvals. The council granted primarily on the fact that there was fire damage that instigated the entire thing. Were it not for the fire, they wouldn't have needed the variances, things along that nation, that nature, because they could have done the second story as of right to an existing home as an addition. So that was council's primary reason for granting the appeal.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions of Mr. Ellis? I see none. Thank you. Reminder, applicants and others, if you're going to speak at the public hearing, please sign in on the sheet over there in the corner and speak clearly into the microphone. If you've not signed in, you can do so on your way out. Also, to applicants and others, please contact staff after the hearing with any questions regarding your projects. If you have something like this, could you turn it off or turn it on silent? I'd appreciate it. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent, continuance, withdrawal, return, or discussion. And I'll just talk about what discussion items are. These are items that will be heard by the board and we will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. And once I close the public hearing for that item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. The recommended dispositions for these land use requests and appeals are the following. Agenda item number five is 1201 Seventh Street Southeast. Staff is recommending variance A for this item to be on consent. And variance B is being returned and approval of the agenda with this item on it acknowledges this and no further action on part of the board as regarded. Is anyone here to speak against variance A? I see no one. Agenda item number six is 2117 Kenwood Parkway. This is a discussion item. And agenda item number seven is 555 Nicollet Mall. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? I see no one. So let's review the items on the agenda for consent. They are items number five and seven. Is there a motion to adopt these items on consent?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Softly?
Chair Perry, I vote in favor of item number five. I have to accuse myself for item number seven.
All right. Thank you. And is there any? Yes.
I would like to abstain from voting on number five, but I approve on number seven.
Okay. So is there anyone who would like to vote against the motion? So with that, we have a motion that passes. So if you are here for items number five or seven, your items are approved and you can leave the chambers if you'd like. Good luck with your projects. Let's move on to number six, 2117 Kenwood Parkway. Before we start, some procedural notes. Appeals of the zoning administrator are not variances. They are not determinations of whether to grant nonconforming use certificates either. The board's job is narrowly defined to determine whether the zoning administrator correctly interpreted and administered the current provision of the zoning ordinance that are subject to the appeal. Furthermore, it's not the board's responsibility to determine whether the zoning ordinance is correct or should be changed. We are not a policymaking body. In appeals of the zoning administrator, we are also not charged with determining the efficacy of the city process. In this particular case, we are addressing a narrowly defined technical issue. Does the proposed stairwell addition interrupt the existing upper roof edge of the gambrel roof to extend the building wall? And therefore, the proposed addition would be considered a full story constituting a three-story building because the addition does not meet all of the criteria for a half story. And with that, Ms. Roman.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Members of the board, item number six is 2117 Kenwood Parkway. The appeal of a determination of the zoning administrator regarding an addition.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure. Does this sound like it's on? It says it's on. Is this better? Perfect. All right. So the subject site is a 12,735 square foot interior lot. We have an existing single-family dwelling constructed on the property in 1897. The structure is three stories above grade with two stories underneath the gambrel roof. The property is zoned UN2 urban neighborhood district, BFI1 interior 2 built form overlay district, and is also located within the Shoreland overlay district. The surrounding neighborhood is zoned UN2 with some UN1 properties to the south. Surrounding uses are primarily low-density residential, single, and two-family dwellings. So this project came into the city in September of 2023. We received a building permit application from the appellant for work that included mudroom addition, or excuse me, a mudroom remodel, kitchen remodel, but also included demolition of an existing staircase that currently connects the second and third stories of the structure and an addition to accommodate a new stairwell. Staff reviewed the proposed plans and notified the appellant that the exterior wall modification being proposed to accommodate the new stairwell did not meet the definition of a half story. And so that would not be permitted in a district where the maximum height for a one-to-three dwelling unit structure is 2.5 stories. So in this case, we would only permit an addition on the second story or a half-story addition. Staff relayed to the appellant that the proposed addition would require a variance for maximum height or that the appellant could move forward with an appeal of the determination of the zoning administrator that this addition would constitute three stories. The appellant then did file an appeal of the decision of the zoning administrator regarding the definition of a half story within the zoning code. So I'm going to read our full half-story definition and then we will get into each specific point under the findings. So code reads, "Story half, a partial story that meets the following criteria. The half story will be located on a principal residential structure with a height of two and a half stories or less. A partial story located on any other structure or on a principal residential structure with a height greater than two and a half stories shall be considered a full story. Habitable space located under a gable or hip roof and all of the roof rafters shall be located within two feet of the floor joists except at gable ends or where dormers are allowed. Dormers on the half story will meet the following standards. The total width of all dormers on any facade will not exceed 50% of the width of the wall of the floor below the half-story roof. Dormers will be located no closer than three feet from any end-of-house corner of the floor below and any gable end wall. And dormers will not extend beyond the wall below and will not interrupt the eve edge of the hip or gable roof." So for staff findings, because the half-story definition reads that a partial story that meets all of the following criteria, considered three stories. So when we are looking at subsection A of the half-story definition, that would be a disqualifying factor because it is already located on a three-story structure, which means they are not applicable to have a half-story addition. To make that finding, we were looking at, again, the existing floor plans. On the third story, the gable end extends beyond the wall below, meaning that we cannot consider that third-story gable end to be a dormer. And then staff also asserts that the half-story cannot exist on a gambrel roof, which we will go into detail with on the next slide. So in terms of the gambrel roof and how staff is interpreting this portion of code, the half-story definition has been revised in code multiple times throughout the years, but the intent of code has remained consistent. So prior to 2014, code specifically stated that a dormer will not interrupt the eve edge of a hip or gable roof. Then the intent of code has consistently required that dormers must be located on hip or gable roofs by using will or the within the definition. So if code were to read a hip or gable roof, then the criteria would be interpreted as optional. When discussing with co-development staff, they also indicated that additional standards would be added for other roof types if the intent were to allow dormers on other versions of sloped roofs. So for example, where we have standards one, two, and three that specifically address gable or hipged roofs, there would be additional standards to address a gambrel roof or a shed roof or other types of sloped roof types if the intent were to allow them. Our 2010 code did specifically state that a half-story definition was a story under a gable or hip roof that contains a habitable floor area. So our definition has been modified multiple times in recent years to clarify other portions of the half-story definition. And one of the results of that modification in text code appears to have been that it muddied the requirement that it be under a hip or gable roof, but staff has consistently interpreted that the requirement is for a dormer or a half-story to be located on a hip or gable roof. Further, the proposed addition does intersect and interrupt the eve edge of the adjacent gable on a third-story roof. So when we are looking at criteria three under subsection C for dormers on the half-story will meet the following standard. We are asserting that the eve edge of that third-story gable is being interrupted by this two-story addition that's spanning between the second and third stories of the structure. So just to provide an example of the way that we would be viewing these eve edges for our interpretation of code, I apologize that this picture is a little bit blurry. But so we have a gable roof on the top middle and we have a hip roof on the bottom left of the screen, and that eve edge is highlighted in red. And so where we would be looking at dormer standards is we would be making sure that any dormer that was being proposed was tucked back behind that plane of the roof to ensure that dormers are meeting the intent of code, which is to limit the amount of space that's in our half story is to ensure that the scale of dormers are appropriate to not be adding significant building bulk, which is in keeping with the traditional neighborhood context of these homes, which are a standard two to two and a half stories high. So when we are looking at the gambrel roof type that the appellants currently have on their home, we see two roof planes. And staff interprets that upper roof edge, which would be a ridge edge, as being a plane that would be required to be uninterrupted by a dormer if one were to be constructed, whereas the proposed dormer addition is intersecting both of the planes on the side of the gambrel roof as opposed to being located within one of the planes. So our recommendation this evening is that because the proposed addition cannot meet criteria A or criteria C3 as required by code and does not comply with the intent of code, the proposed addition would constitute a three-story dwelling and would not be permitted without a variance for height. Our recommended motion this evening is that the zoning board of adjustment denies the appeal of the decision of the zoning administrator's determination that the proposed stairwell addition interrupted the existing upper roof edge of the gambrel roof to extend the building wall, and the proposed addition would be considered a full story constituting a three-story building because the addition does not meet all of the criteria for a half story. If the board were to deny the appeal this evening, the appellants may return to the board with the variance request for this addition, or they could revise their proposed plans to comply with code. They also have the ability to appeal the decision of this body to the biz committee depending on the decision made this evening. That is my presentation. I will stand for questions and the appellants are here this evening to present as well.
Thank you, Ms. Roman. Are there any questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Thank you, Chair Perry. Thank you, Ms. Roman. Would you repeat yourself with regard to the gambrel roof and how the upper edge becomes a factor with the gambrel roof, whereas the upper edge is not considered a factor with the hip roof?
Sure. So when we are looking at code in the strictest sense, staff first asserts that we would not be permitting any type of dormer on any roof that is not a gable or a hipped roof. So for a gable and a hipped roof, we have one roof plane that continues down the entirety of the roof structure. And that allows for your traditional standard gable that tucks back into the attic space allows for a little bit of light and a little bit of usable headspace. When we are looking at a gambrel, also considered a Dutch colonial, typically those floor spaces are already completely usable. They have much larger headspaces. And so there isn't the ability to create a dormer with the intent that dormers are being used in some of our more traditional roof types like the gable or the hip. So if the dormers were permitted to be on a gambrel-type roof, believe the intent would be that they would be required to not interrupt one plane of the roof to ensure that the scale was minimized. When you have a gambrel and you have two stories, any dormer that is interrupting either the ridge or the eve, so that ridge being that line where the plane changes directionality, you're going to intersect essentially two stories. So two areas of livable space, the way that this home is designed, which from our view of the way that code is written to control the overall size of dormers, we don't believe that that's the intent of the code.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to repeat it back and you let me know if I understand this correctly. Code allows dormers to be treated as a half story to allow people additionally usable space in a home that is otherwise not large enough or bulky enough to constitute a true additional level of space or of height.
So.
Additional story. Sorry. Is that fair? And because a gambrel is traditionally a full story in and of itself, we don't give them the same benefit of that flexibility for a dormer?
Vice Chair Softly, that's generally correct. I mean, we are allowing half stories to be not counted towards the gross floor area of the structure as a way to allow people to expand existing homes without including additional mass. So we allow finished basements not to count towards the total gross floor area and half stories not to count towards gross floor area. This gives existing properties the ability to expand as, you know, families are growing, things like that, without making the homes themselves seem larger. Because our traditional built form is a lot of single-family, or excuse me, single-story homes, two-story homes, the two and a half story maximum to allow a finished attic seems appropriate to allow small dormers that are allowing some ability to finish an attic space with headroom. But where a gambrel is allowing, in this particular property, where the gambrel already has two stories of usable space, adding that additional building bulk on the exterior of the building is contributing more so to the building looking like a full three stories.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Grant Skors.
First off, thanks. This is complicated as heck and your geometry and algebra skills are far better than mine are. But I am confused because health, safety, welfare is important. This is an 1894 building. They are doing an adjustment. We had a 1908 building here that we allowed significant changes to. And I'm just struggling here on the last piece that's the square footage component. Do you do consider then a stairwell as habitable space? Because that's, because you don't inhabit a space. I mean, I guess, and I'm just concerned about the safety and welfare. I mean, we've got an existing bathroom and an existing bedroom up there. We have existing spaces that are up there. And what we're trying to do is improve the code. So are you suggesting that, your last comment there, are you suggesting that a different stairwell could be done without this exterior remodeling?
Thank you, Board Member Grant Skors. Chair Perry, we would assert that there are ways that the applicant could comply with both zoning code and building code by constructing a stairwell within the interior of the building or by doing some sort of gable addition or other type of structural addition that would comply with code or seeking a variance for the height of the structure. So we are not necessarily saying that this is a health, safety, or welfare issue or is or is not. We are strictly looking at, does code allow us to consider this to be a half story or not? There are other ways to address those types of concerns. Does that mean?
And those would be? I'm confused with the other ways that would be.
So they could construct a stairwell within the interior of the structure without proposing an addition, or they could construct an addition that would meet all of the half-story standards?
Or if I may, they could seek a variance on the height of the building.
Oh, okay.
So there are other forms of relief than changing the design?
Because it is pretty clear that to do a stair on the interior, they would have to go into the other stair, which I'm assuming has got some value.
Which is sort of the line of thinking, I think, that one would pose if this was a variance that was coming before us rather than an interpretation of the code.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Thanks for your presentation. I appreciate it laying it out. Do you have the ability to pull up the staff packet on this one?
Sure.
To display? If you can, can you pull up the blueprints, sheet A6, the section view? Specifically, page A6, view three? You zoom in on where the second floor stairs transitions, does it turn around to go to the third floor? So yeah, there we go. So that change in roof line, that's the existing roof line that's shown there, transposed on it, that's the line we're talking about, correct? So the entire argument is, are they affecting that line or not? Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I see none. Thank you for your presentation. Is the applicant here? Yep. Okay. So let's open the public hearing. We'll give you about 15 minutes to make your case. And if you could give your name and address for the record, that would be great.
If I may, Chairman, I'm the architect of the project in speaking for the appellant.
Sure.
Can I introduce myself?
No.
Yeah, I'm Chris Christoferson. I'm the architect of the project for the 2117 Kenwood. And I think it is true that the main objection or the main reason we're here today is the interpretation of one line of code. And the code is dormers will not extend beyond the wall below and will not interrupt the eve edge of a hip or gable roof. Now, on the other image here, as you look at the drawings, and I'm just going to go to the perspectives that are down below. When we look at this drawing, the existing house is a gambrel roof, which is considered a gable end. So that code is a gable-end roof, and this is a gable-end roof. It does have a bend of the roof, which is unique to typical double-gable, as the side is, a double-gable end. But how we are interpreting it is it is a gable-end roof. And then also, there are two other things. One is, does it interrupt the wall plane below? And when you look at this elevation or this perspective, you can see that the existing roof structure actually goes below the proposed dormer and also is stepped back from the adjacent wall and the wall below, which is the existing first and second floor. So if the two things in that last part of code is it cannot interrupt the wall below, it doesn't do that, as you can see, the roof line goes below it, and then also you can see that it does not, which means it does not interrupt the eve. So in this gambrel roof, the eve edge is where the eve passes the wall plane below. And in this design of a gambrel roof, the eve edge, we think, should be considered at the lower level, not a roof edge, which is the bend in the roof. And the code says a eve edge. And clearly, on a gambrel roof, the eve is where it passes the wall below, and that's below the dormer, proposed dormer. So that's why we think we're in consideration for meeting the code as it's written.
All right.
And another thing to talk about is, you know, the main, obviously, wealth and safety is a concern. And we're basically making an improved stair, which right now, there is a stair that's right there. It is a winder, and it's not as safe as a stair. The dormer has been designed to diminish as small as possible to meet all the minimum code requirements for a stair inside. So when trying to relocate it within the house or put it behind the upper bend in the roof, that doesn't allow a two-coat stair to be built, given the arrangement of floor and rooms in the house. To build something within, you would have to do, you would ruin kind of the floor plan of the second floor and allow, it would take away space and habitable space in that house.
So that seems like a pretty compelling argument for variance. And I have a question, why you didn't seek a variance when you have such a, what seems like is such a strong case for variance to be granted?
It seemed appropriate that the explanation of the code was good enough where it's a gable end, it doesn't interrupt the wall below, and it doesn't interrupt the eve edge was the explanation of why we didn't do the variance, the interpretation, because it felt like it was more of an interpretation than actually how the code reads.
I see. Any other questions of the appellant? I see none. Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you, Board.
Anyone else? Do either of you want to speak? Okay. Anyone, there's no one else left in the room, but I have to say this. Does anybody want to speak against the application? I see no one. Let's close the public hearing. Board comment. Mr. Hutchins?
Thanks, Chair Perry. Thanks for coming down. I would agree with the chair's comments that I think you have incredibly strong case. I would agree with the chair's comments that I think you have an incredibly strong case for a variance. I do think that staff interpreted the code correctly and the intent of the code, so that's where I'm standing now.
Ms. Grant's Korsch, did you want to speak? Okay.
I agree with what he said.
Okay. Mr. Safely?
I don't have any additional comments. I am in agreement with what Mr. Hutchins said in the staff presentation. I was going to make a motion to move staff findings and support the decision of the zoning administrator.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Callahan. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Grant's Korsch.
I'm just curious if, Chair Perry, when do you think, could they appeal for a variance even tomorrow and we could hear it shortly? I mean, I just, I don't know what the timeline, what is the schedule for something like that? I'm just curious about time framing and construction schedules and.
So if you could step up to the microphone, please?
My apologies. So once a complete application is submitted to staff, so that would include all the required materials, the required findings, paying the fees, things like that, we typically can schedule approximately three to four weeks out because we do have required notice periods for the neighbors and things like that. I don't know that we have our board of adjustments schedule set for the new year yet, but I mean, we do, okay.
We do for the first two months.
Perfect. So hypothetically, if they could get something to us in the near future, we could be hearing it at some point in January.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Callahan.
Aye.
Grant's Korsch.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Ingram.
Aye.
Johansson is absent. Safely.
Aye.
And Smikarova and Wang are both absent, so that's five ayes and zero nays.
So that motion passes, your appeal is denied. I don't have to say it, but it's pretty clear that your other avenue might be one that you could consider, but you can talk to staff about that. I would just say that, as you can read from talking, from hearing the board, that you have a pretty compelling case for a variance. So that might be the better route to go. But please talk to staff about that, and thanks for coming down today. All right, so that's all our land use requests. Now, Mr. Safely, I think this is his last meeting. Is that true?
That is my understanding. My term, my term is up at the end of the calendar year here.
So we don't have a resolution for you?
That's okay, I think Mr. Ellis has a comment.
Until we have a replacement, you are technically still on the board of adjustment, but I believe, but I believe that you have, no longer meet the criteria or will shortly be no longer meeting the criteria to be on the board of adjustment by no longer being a resident of this great city. So.
As much as I'd like to neither confirm nor deny, because I love Minneapolis, I will be leaving the city, and I will technically be ineligible to serve.
So I will just say that we've gotten into this situation before where we haven't had a resolution. It is, I'll speak on behalf as well as I can, but it's been a great honor serving with you. You've served as vice chair for how many years now?
Four, five.
And, and in this last year, you had to step up on several occasions because of life events that were going on in my life, and so I really appreciate all the service that you have given over the years. And what year did you start? Do you remember?
I think this is 10 complete years here, but I might be a year early on that, I don't know. I think this.
So, thank you for all your service. I always appreciate the way you approach a topic, which is very objectively. It's probably partly due to your training as a lawyer, but it is, I think it makes for a very robust discussion when we are looking at items, and you always have questions. So I really appreciate that as well. I think that adds, and we are going to miss you and that contribution.
Well, thank you. I've really enjoyed my time here on the board. It's been, you know, incredible. It's been wonderful to learn from your tutelage as the chair, and your steady hand over this body, and to, you know, make so many decisions with the other board members over the years and working with staff. It's been really wonderful, more than I would have imagined at the time I first applied.
So can I announce that you are also a new father?
It's just happened. Yep, our baby girl joined us a few weeks ago, and we're really excited, you know, to focus on her for the next, I don't know how many days and years of my life, the rest of it.
So maybe we can haul you back in for a presentation where we do a resolution for you, before you have to go back to full-time duty.
That, that could be possible.
Okay.
Where are you moving to?
St. Paul. Don't worry, it's great, I know, a dagger. Wouldn't be so bad if I said St. Louis Park, though. It wouldn't be so bad if I said St. Louis Park, would it?
All right. So with that, an error comes to an end, and I think we've completed all of the business for this meeting. Is there anything else, any new or old business? No?
We do have a meeting January 4th?
We do have a meeting on January 4th, and it is in this room. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.[1788.64]